And thank you for attending the March 6, 2019 Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I'm going to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing and remember all those who are serving across the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Through a few introductions, rolling over to the far right, we have our consultants, Jonathan, who's our planner, Dennis, our engineer, we have Rick, our attorney. To the far front table on my right, we have Robert Angelo, Sandra Capiglione. To my left, we have Chris Gerver, Rich Catagio, our Secretary Gail, and I am Maria Hunter, your planning board chairperson. And just to reflect, to let everyone know, there will be one extra item right after we do the minutes, and that's regards to Pine Ridge Estates. It's a discussion amongst the board members and the attorney. With that being said, we have minutes from February 6, 2019. Do I have a motion to accept them?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, yes. Before we get into that, on May 15, which would be our second meeting of the month, I'm requesting that we schedule that and reschedule to May 22, which would be the fourth week of the month. As we get closer to that, I just want everyone to keep in mind about that date. There are five weeks in May. Due to conflict with scheduling, I need to push that meeting back to May 22. So, board members and consultants, just let me know if there's going to be an issue with that change.
I'm not going to be here.
And I already spoke with the attorney, and he has his office covering, I believe, as we spoke about this last time.
May 22.
May 22, which would be the fourth Wednesday of the month. And if we have to, we'll cancel it and we'll have a meeting in June. All right. So, the extra item that I have for tonight for discussion with our attorney and our engineer, it's Pine Ridge Estates. We received a letter from Mr. Asha Horowitz on yesterday. And the reason why I put this on, because he has, requesting an extension, because last year, we approved the extension due to today's date. So, where's Mr. Horowitz? If you could please come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and then we'll go in from there. Oh, someone turn it on? No, we have to turn it off. I'll turn it on. Just give us a brief, why are you here?
Okay, we were here last year to get an extension for a preliminary approval that we have on Pine Ridge Estates for six lots of division. And there is acting the lawsuit against us as the ownership. And at that time, it was, we emailed to the attorneys from the village, all the paperwork, and they accepted the extension. We won that lawsuit about a month ago, and they filed for an appeal. So, hopefully, that appeal will go away the next few months, and we can move on with the Board of Health and the final approvals.
Thank you. Rick, would you comment on this, please?
I think what the board would like, we can have, I think, what would be appropriate, would be a shorter extension than normal, so that the board could go ahead and receive some proof as to exactly where you are in the appeals process. My understanding is that there was a request, and I don't know by whom, to go ahead and have appellate court to extend the time which the briefs were to be filed. I don't know whether or not the briefs have been filed as of this date, but typically, it is not a matter of a few months. Even after the briefs are filed, it usually takes the, this particular appellate court, I would say anywhere from six to nine months, just to schedule a oral argument. And then they'll have the oral argument, and then it takes months after that before that session. So, if in fact, this board is going to go ahead and continue just until the appellate process is finished, that's going to be a rather lengthy time. There's also a possibility that whoever doesn't prevail on the, at the appellate level, this intermediate appellate level, may ask the highest court in New York, the Court of Appeals, to accept this case. That process is relatively short to get an answer as to whether or not they would accept it. They don't have to accept it. Usually, about a month after the request goes in. But if they say to accept it, that's going to be another lengthy period of time. So, I think what the board would want right now is proof as to where we stand in the appellate division with respect to the filing of the briefs.
I can definitely email that. I think we're supposed to respond this month, in the next 30 days. I know about the one-time extension for responding. But I could email everything into the board, to the village, whenever. I'll keep you posted.
Please send it to the building department. And then after they receive that, depending upon when they extend this to, the board will then revisit it after hearing what the status is of the appellate process.
Okay.
And so, for the, I'll answer any questions that the board may have, and obviously, you can ask any questions of the applicant. But just for your own purposes, if you, you could extend it to August 21st, which is prior to the end of two 90-day extensions. And then if you wanted a single 90-day extension, your last meeting date is going to be May 15, 2019.
James, that's a May 22, right?
Not limited to just the 90 days, but that's typically how you deal with these things, either in multiples of 90-day extensions.
All right. So, you're saying the first, if we gave a 90-day extension, it would be to May 15?
Correct.
And if we gave...
Well, except that that's now potentially not your meeting date.
Right.
So, you could move it to the 22nd, because the 90 days actually runs out on June 4th, but that's before your next meeting date.
Okay. All right. Robert, any thoughts, concerns, or questions? And just for the, we did receive a memo from Dennis Lindsay's office today. I know it was emailed to everybody, and it was printed out. The preliminary approval was done on May 29, 2018, and the plans were signed on December 18, 2008. And it was for a 15.28 acre tract of land with six proposed lots in frontage on Scunney Monk. Robert, do you have any thoughts, concerns, or questions?
Yeah, I want to ask Rick, how many extensions have we had on this application so far?
Dennis has just showed me, it looks like there's around 11 extensions for various extension requests over the years since 2008. I will also confirm that it appears clear of the applicant's representation that they prevailed in the oral court is correct.
Can we give him a better microphone, please? I don't know why you're cutting out.
There was a motion made to the court. There has not been a trial at all, but the court found on motion papers that the applicant was indeed a bona fide purchaser, and therefore entitled to retain ownership of the property. That's the issue that's on appeal.
So, do you think that by the end of this year, let's say, we would have a definite decision as far as all the court cases and so forth?
No, I don't think you'd have one by the end of this year. I think that if in fact, all of the briefs, et cetera, are going to be in within the next 30 days or so, I think it's likely that you wouldn't get a decision for approximately a year from that date, given the current docket as to how this particular court works. Now, the court can go ahead and do anything it wants. It could schedule oral argument a week after these 30 days are up and decided in a matter of days thereafter. But I'm just saying that typical time, we're involved in a number of appeals before this appellate court, and that's typically how long they take after the briefs are in.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Sandy?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Horowitz, when did this, has this been in suit since 2008?
That I don't remem-- it wasn't in, when we got the, when we got the preliminary approvals, there was no suit yet. They came in afterwards.
Okay, do you know what possibly was?
They sued two parties. They sued the seller and the buyer. So, they weren't basically the seller, somebody else sold it to us. Our case, they kept on going on, and they're trying to appeal it. The seller's case, they just dropped out and they canceled, and they decided not to pursue.
But do you know when that, when that litigation started?
I don't have the exact date, but I can look it up.
Okay, just curious. And then Dennis, at the, a year ago, when the applicant was before us, you had said that you thought that the lot definition could have changed. And I'm assuming by today's memo, that the lot definition hadn't changed.
No, we, when we filed that memo to you, it said that this was a R-2A zone, it's an R-2A zone, and we talked about the bulk requirements. There have been changes in the regulations that would be applicable to development of the property, MS 4 regulations and other things. But in terms of the zoning and that sort of thing, we didn't find any changes. And in the area, there have been limited changes.
I think that's what you were talking about last year, was the definitions there. Okay. All right, that's all I had.
And they would be required to comply with all the MS 4 obligations and everything else. They would not get a pass on that because of their prior approval.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Chris?
For counsel, 310-45F, doesn't apply because we're not at final approval yet?
No.
This is a final condition, right? I have to check to see whether or not it's a final conditional.
Okay, yeah, no, it's 310-45, section F.
Preliminary approval is all they have. That's all they have?
Well, according to my notes here, I don't check. I just, I heard the plans were signed, so.
It's only preliminary.
Preliminary approval is also two. I believe it's preliminary approval.
That's when they filed the lawsuit, right after preliminary, before we went to the Board of Health.
I don't have the code in front of me, Chris, so I, Dennis can find it, I don't have any connection.
It was about, it was about 2009 the lawsuit started, because I didn't sign, I didn't sign the plan, the preliminary plan until 2018 in December. What dates do you want? Got them all. Rick, can you repeat what you said on the record, please?
Sure. Chris was, was pointing out a provision in the code that deals with expiration period, but that was an expiration period with site plan. We're dealing here with a subdivision. And so, there are different provisions that address preliminary and final subdivisions, and the ability of the board to go ahead and grant extensions. There used to be the state law required, that although you could have unlimited preliminary approval for subdivision extensions, you could only have, I think it was two approvals with respect to final. They then amended that probably in the early 2000s, I think it was. And you can now also have, there is no limit, and I don't want to say it's an unlimited amount. It's up to the discretion of the board as to whether or not extend it, but there's no artificial end date with respect to either preliminary or final subdivision approvals.
Thank you. Anything else, Chris?
No, thanks, thank you.
Rich?
Just one thing. Being that this was not on the agenda tonight, and I don't have the documents in front of me, could our attorney state the two options, or three, whatever they are tonight? And if we decide not to extend, what would be the reason? Because this has been going on for years, so, again, it's not on the agenda, I don't have the documents. What are our options tonight?
Well, in the universe of options, you have the ability to either grant the extension or deny it.
Right.
And if you grant the extension, you have the ability to grant an extension that the board, the majority of the board believes is reasonable to extend. To deny a request for an extension of approval is not just that I think it's been going on for too long. There are certain rights that attach to a preliminary approval for a subdivision that you would then be cutting off. And so, typically, it is, as in your materials, that Dennis summarized, and I've advised the board previously, that it's essentially that either there's been an abandonment of the project, that is, you know, that you haven't heard from the applicant, it doesn't look like the applicant cares about this project anymore, it literally seems like the applicant has abandoned it by not trying to further it. If there have been significant changes, either in zoning or in surrounding circumstances. So, since 2008, if there was a tremendous, or I don't want to use the word tremendous, but a significant amount of surrounding development that may have occurred in the interim, such that the approval that you gave would be different if you gave it today, there are then reasonable grounds for you to go ahead and do several things, one of which would be to deny it, because it is no longer valid under current circumstances. Or you could simply, if you believed that it was an environmental issue, you could reopen seeker at this point in time and ask for a supplemental seeker determination. So, those are really your choices. Thank you.
Okay. So, board members, hearing from our attorney and the applicant, and what the applicant is requesting, do we have a motion to extend it for 90 days or 180 days?
I'll make a motion that we extend for 90 days contingent that the applicant provides proof to counsel within five business days that we're still in litigation, or they're still in litigation.
I just, just to say, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, I emailed today all the documents to the building department.
It's, the documents have been submitted today, this afternoon, to Maria Rubio, the building department's secretary, and it's with the, it's with our attorney at this time, and it's being reviewed. So, I don't know if you want to put a timeframe on that, if you want to change that, or leave it as your five days.
14 business days enough? 30?
I can't put a timeframe on for our attorney to review.
That's why I'm asking.
I know she told me she sent it, it was sometime after 3:00, I spoke with her today. I've been on the phone with her so many ti, everyone, I forget what's the exact time I was with her.
Okay, well, I, I don't see it. But it, you certainly can, can make any condition that you want. So, if the board wants to make a, say, I think reasonable is that the applicant's attorney, or the applicant, needs to, actually, what I would prefer is that the applicant must get his attorney to go ahead and send to me proof of where they are in the litigation process. I can then look at that and make a determination and advise the board within 14 days. And then, when the 90 days comes back, you'll make a determination at that point in time.
I'll amend my motion then.
To what Rick said?
To what Rick said.
So, the 90 days is going to be to May 22, 2019?
That's right. But the applicant has to realize, you have to contact your attorney, and within five days, he has to send me proof of where you are in the litigation, whether that's a docket calendar, whether that are briefs that were submitted, or anything else, so that I can then advise the board based upon verifiable documents of where you are in the litigation process.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Have all of you said aye?
Yeah.
Five, yes? All right. So, you'll get the information from your attorney to our attorney?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is Rushmore Estate Winery. Review and discuss, I'm going to read what was on the agenda here. Review and discuss revised site plans submitted for proposed winery slash vineyard slash farm to include the construction of a new 4,000 square foot winery and tasting room building. Said property is located at 14 Castleton Drive, and is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 202, block 1, lots 70 and 79. Which attorney wants to go first? I guess, go ahead, Jack.
I'll introduce myself. Good evening, Jay Myrow, Bluestein Shapiro, Rich and Barone, attorney for the applicant. I'm here with the applicant, Seth Poulfer.
Okay, so, we're, we're here tonight because we're going to do a, first of all, our consultant for traffic is not here at my request. I told him to stay home, because we're not going to be reviewing traffic tonight on this board. What this board did receive via email was a, we have to make a motion to rescission of lead agency notice. Rick, do you want to explain this to the board members and the public?
Sure. Where we are right now is this, is that there's an application pending before the zoning board of appeals for a variance, as well as an application before this board for site plan approval, special permit, I believe, as well. That's not unusual, and they usually proceed simultaneously. And it's a matter of, with respect to seeker, if it's not a type 2 action under the ZBA, that there's a little bit of a ping pong going back and forth. And you're used to that, you've, you've done that on numerous occasions. This is a little bit of a different situation. And the situation is this, is that the ZBA has to make a determination with respect to access off of 32, whether or not there's going to be a variance granted. If they say, no, we're not going to be giving you that variance, it's not like they could, like with some other variants, say a height variance, come back to your board and say, all right, we'll adjust it, and we'll come down with something lower in height. So, you can still review this simultaneously. This one really is, one should follow the other. So, if they, the ZBA says no on the variance, there's nothing for you to decide. They can't have this application. So, it really doesn't make sense for you to go throughout the entire site plan, special permit, and your seeker review, if in fact, after you do all that, it goes back to the ZBA, and they say, no, you can't have this project. So, in, under these fairly unique circumstances, it is my recommendation to you that you would decouple the coordinated review under seeker to allow the ZBA to have their determination first. If they say no to the variance, that's it, it goes away. If they say yes to the variance, it'll come back to you. You then would have all of your same plenary powers to go ahead and review this application, and including all traffic and everything else. So, if you needed to have additional traffic information, then what may have been provided to the ZBA, you have that right, because it's under an uncoordinated, the ZBA isn't the lead agency. So, my advice to you is that it'd be most appropriate, under this fairly unique circumstances, that you would rescind your decision to be lead agency, so that there wouldn't be any lead agency. And each of the boards would be doing their own seeker determination. So, the ZBA, before they have to act, they have to do their own seeker determination, but it's on a slightly different issue than the multiple issues that you would have with respect to a site plan and special permit. And your powers and jurisdiction would not be cabined in any way by the fact that the ZBA said, oh, we only studied this. You would have the ability to study everything you need to study for site plan.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Ken.
I don't know whether you noticed other involved agencies when you did seeker? My concern...
I can't remember, but what we would do, what we have, there's a notice that we have drafted for the board's consideration, if they agree to this. And then, we would notify all the involved agencies and any interested ones that previously received notice of intent from this board. So, they would all be advised that this planning board was no longer going to be lead agency. Now, theoretically, that would allow any other involved agency to say they now want to be lead agency, and that's fine, that's out of their hands, and you would have to deal with that, whether that be the ZBA, although I don't think they would do that, or some other agency, I don't know. Do you remember, Dennis, whether there's...
The only thing, the only thing I'm, the only thing I'm questioning is how close we are to another municipality. I'm not sure how far the Rushmore Estate property goes back, whether it gets up against an, it's, I don't, I think you've got to be 500 feet away from another municipality, correct?
Well, they, they wouldn't...
It was GML 239. I don't know if that exists.
Yeah, that, that's not, that's not an involved agency issue, so that's a different issue. Yeah. So, I don't think there's another, but if there is another involved or interested agency that we have previously identified, we'd be sending out this notice that we have rescinded our lead agency status.
Did you see a copy of, of the rescission?
We're, we're, just wanted to, if you come back after this, here, whether, after, it's the other...
No, from, from my point of view, once we have decided that we are going to be uncoordinated, we should stay uncoordinated. I don't think that it's the intention of seeker to sort of, sort of say, oh, we're going to be uncoordinated, and we're going to be coordinated, now we're going to be uncoordinated, going back and forth. So, I think once said, it ought to be uncoordinated, every involved agency would have to do their own seeker determinations, except if one of those decided to assert lead agency status. But this board certainly would go ahead and fulfill its role as a planning board under an uncoordinated seeker, just as if they were lead agency.
Rich, thoughts, concerns, questions?
I'm good.
Chris?
I'm fine with it.
Sandy?
Yeah, I guess I'm just confused, because a year ago, well, over a year ago, in January, it was Mr. Myrow that wanted the uncoordinated review. And at that point, we said, we voted on it, we said, no, it was coordinated. So, I don't understand what's changed that, because he had to get the same variance a year ago.
Right. I've revisited the issue, and I think that my prior position, that it made sense to go forward with this, was based upon how we dealt with other cases. And when I looked closer at the exact variance that they would needed, I have reconsidered my position. I believe I was wrong initially to advise you that way. Rather than continue in what I believe now was folly, I have changed my position. You can decide to do whatever you want. I'm just telling you what my belief is as to what is the most appropriate way to approach this from an environmental review process under the DEC regulations.
Okay, so now, both boards will do seeker?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And it'll come back to our board?
Right.
If the variance is given. If the variance is not given, then the applicant will have to do whatever he has to for the application.
Okay.
No, I'm fine.
Robert, you're good?
Yes.
I'm okay, because I've been, talked with counsel back and forth in emails. Board members, we do have rescission of lead agency notice, and they're, they have, and they're involved is the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals, New York State Liquor Authority, interested parties, the Orange County Department of Public Works, and the Orange County Department of Planning. I will offer a motion that we rescind our, our motion of doing a coordinated review.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time out.
It's actually rescinding your role as lead agency, is what you're rescinding. It, it results in uncoordinated review, but it's actually rescinding the lead agency role.
I'll amend that. Gail, you've got that verbiage from Rick? Thank you. With that correction, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is Vice slash Apple Hill, public hearing for ARV review of proposed single-family home located at 26 Apple Hill Drive in Highland Mills. This said, this property is designated as a critical environmental area pursuant to CIGRA, and subject to the Village Regulations for Ridge Preservation 310-13. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 204, block 2, lot 2. Being that tonight is a public hearing, but I'm just... Being that tonight is a public hearing, I'm just going to, for the record, on January 26th, there was a site visit with Dennis Lindsay, our engineer, Sandy, Chris, Robert, and myself. I will defer to Dennis later to give us a brief overview of that site visit. In line, also, we received on February 6th, the project description with drawings from the applicant. February 14th, we received a copy of Gary Thomas's memo from May 7th, 2018. On February 19th, we received letters of support from residents at 18 and 13 Apple Hill and 138 Scunney Monk Road, and on 219, we received additional elevations from the applicant on this application. With all that being said, the applicant would like to give us a brief overview before we go into public hearing status. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Nathan Braach for the applicant, also here tonight is our architect, Mr. Barry Tarek from Barry Tarek Architects, John Queenon from Land and Trolley Engineering, and our attorney, Mr. Jay Myrow. So it's, I guess, the third meeting we are attending. Initially, we started out with a much bigger house, and the first thing, the most concerning issue was the size of the house, and we went ahead and we downsized the house significantly, which we already presented at the last meeting. We have shown 3D renderings showing the front and the roadside view of how the house would look. The board was concerned about the visual impact. Sorry, the mic is making a little fun. And one of the points Mr. Myrow mentioned that is, since the house would be further in, and the slope difference between the road and the site, the visual impact on the street would be very minimal, and the board had requested that we show an updated rendering showing accurately the slopes and the house as visible from the road, which we had submitted. Also, the board at the site meet, the site visit, they have requested that the septic be moved further into the site to save some vegetation there, which we...
We asked, we didn't request.
Suggested, okay? And we went ahead and we did that, so the site plan has been updated to do that. Like you just mentioned, we reached out to some of the neighbors to ask their opinion on this, and they actually expressed their full support for this, and we submitted those letters to the board as well. And so I believe we have accommodated, I guess, most of, even all of the concerns that have been brought up, and we actually hope to get this finally through. Mr. Myrow has also submitted a letter to the planning board, and I'll let him take the mic and discuss that further. Thank you.
Thank you. You sent us a letter, Mr. Myrow?
I think I sent an addendum to the application.
It was unsigned, it was no.
It was with the package that was submitted.
That one, okay, gotcha.
And while we're discussing that, I need to make a correction to that. I think on the last page, there was a reference to the number of feet below grade the front of the houses. I got that number off by doing the math off a map that I'd seen and basically subtracted. John Queenon's telling me my math is not that good, that that number should be 10 feet, not 18 feet. So maybe I was using the metric system, I don't know.
Second page, the last paragraph you're saying where it says approximately 18 feet below.
John's telling me the correct number should be 10. So I'd like to make the correction.
Okay, because Barry had said 12, but it's 10.
It's 10.
It's 10.
Use the microphone, I'm sorry.
Not in defense, but as the road is pitching, it depends where you are standing on that road. So I would say it's anywhere between 9 and 11 and 1/2. But we'll use whatever we have to our advantage.
10 to 11, depending on where you stand.
What he said.
Anything else?
Actually, you mentioned three letters that were received? Were they since the last meeting? I don't think I've seen them.
They were submitted February 19th, letter of support from 18 Apple Hill, Judah Deitch, Toby Mendel, 138 Scunney Monk Road, and also Hindi Wurzberger from 13 Apple Hill Road.
Those were three separate letters, or one?
They're the form letter, but it's the same, it's the same letter.
Okay, and they were in support?
They were in support of the application.
Great, okay. So since the last meeting, we had agreed to come in and give you some renderings as to what the visual impact might be from the street and from the side of the house, based on the topography, where the house is going to be located, what the existing vegetation is going to be, and what we're committed to leaving in place and supplementing if you feel it's appropriate. I'm going to let John or Barry explain to you what we've, what's been submitted, and go over what the impacts are, especially compared to some of the neighboring houses in the development.
Thank you. Can you hold the microphone so we can take it? You know you're on TV.
The, what we had discussed previously was that we prepare and provide what I'll call a site section, which the reference line is right here, and I think has been submitted. We went from the road all the way to the back of the property, basically just a very straightforward thing, we just plotted the elevations, and we planted a section of the house in the drawing. That's how, you know, based on, or I'm showing this section, the elevation of the first floor of the house is nine feet below the road level, eight feet below it here, 10 feet below it here, the road has a pitch to it, so we kind of just went for the average. And so also, we reviewed while we were at the, on our site visit together, there is small berm, let's call it, naturally occurring there. From the road, it rises up between two and three feet immediately before the grade begins to fall into the property. And I think we were like-minded that it would be advantageous to keep that berm in place. And in order to do that, we relocated that septic system, as has been previously mentioned, and we will keep that berm and as much of the existing trees and vegetation that are currently there. And we prepared, and I apologize, these are printing dark, we've tried a lot of times to make this happen. But there's just two shots, you know, from the survey. This one's pretty much shown where that site section is taken, pretty much dead on to the house from the road. This one's back down the road a little bit where the driveway is cut in. We took the three-dimensional rendering of the house and put it in. I'm not going to sit here and claim that every single tree shown here is exactly as is. It's, there's a lot of vegetation out there, some young, some old. It will change over the years. All of it is naturally occurring, I don't believe anything there has been planted, and have no reason to believe that it would continue to be the exact same density as an average density across the road. So this is computer accurate, and works in concert with this. How much of that house you would actually see if you're standing on the road? I don't even remember, about 150 feet from the road.
Anything else from John? You want to add any? Gail or Rich, can you please give him that microphone again and see if it's open and working?
Not much for me more to add, I think Barry and Jay covered the majority of it. From our standpoint, it's a, it's a pretty standard site plan that we did. We have the driveway coming in at the low side of the house, miming existing grade, and that was in order to retain the most vegetation. Based upon the feedback that we did receive at the sidewalk, we had that septic system located right here, and we pulled that back about 15, 20 feet, so that would retain pretty much about 25 feet of the existing vegetation that currently exists there. So to our limited, from the curb to our limited disturbance, it's 35 feet, and you have about 25 feet of vegetation tree covered there now. You know, 10 feet of your right of way is cleared. So we feel that retaining that, as was suggested, is a good, was a good idea. It's limited clearing for the septic. Limited clearing for the septic system, and then the rest of this, based on from the driveway, this entire area in the front of the house is retained as a wooded parcel. We've done clearing in the front, obviously, here to set the house, but you're, you're really looking at a good, probably 80 feet. Two, clearing for the house, the yard.
Jeff, are these batteries need to be replaced, or why are we cutting out? Okay.
I'll just talk real loud.
Just as long as Gail can hear everything and...
Okay, I'll close now.
Ask a question, since he's on the septic field?
And now, we've been, around the lot, to provide a limited buffer here, and a limited buffer along the sideline as well. We've also pulled in the grating along the back in order to retain a little more vegetation along the back, since pretty much the entire lot is wooded. But we've also provided for adequate clearing areas for the rear and for the front, so that it's not, you know, we didn't put the limited disturbance line, you know, two feet from the foundation. So that in concert with everything, the driveway very well going down, it is set back at its closest point to the right of way is 157 feet. So actually, to the road, you're probably closer to 170 feet from the actual curb line, and that's at the closest point, and as you see, Apple Hill, coming up the hill is getting farther away, so you're even farther away at the lower end to the house. That's, it's pretty much it, in a nutshell, I could keep going on, but I think we've looked at this plenty of times. I will just give you, we did an updated aerial with some drones, in order to give you what the neighborhood looks like, because all the current aerials online do not have this lot across the street constructed. So this was just to give you an idea of what it actually looks like about two weeks ago. And this is showing you, I think this is 13 across the street, very similar house to what we're proposing, and they're much closer to the road than we are. So we feel that combination with us being farther back from the road and lower, that we're more than the rest of the houses. And if you go along this whole stretch here, you'll notice, this is our footprint, here's their footprint, and you notice the other houses, as you're coming down, they have quite large and expansive areas, not so much house, but you include large driveway, large pool area, and it equates to roughly similar style that we're proposing. So just to give you an idea of what, what the rest of the neighborhood looks like, and then obviously behind us is wooded.
Yeah, one thing, my last point, that might not be so obvious from all this, is you kind of, the aerial photo kind of brings it up. You can see the density of vegetation that's on these sites. Pretty clear when we were here on site visit, there's a picture of the house, I can see it around, a small one, but this house...
Rich, give me the microphone.
That's the one I gave up.
The news.
That one, dead. That's live.
Live, okay.
Just probably don't look around as much, maybe just...
Okay. So this house, and we all took a look at it when we were there that Saturday, is this house here, and though it's not quite as wide a house as we're proposing, it is at the road elevation, and, you know, I was going to say it doesn't have a single tree, but it looks like it has a single tree in front. And this is in the middle of summer, obviously, so, you know, we have an immeasurable amount of screening that's, you know, much, much deeper than what the comparable house across the street has. Yeah, the entire, yeah, the entire house is visible, top to bottom.
Thank you.
Hello?
All right, you guys are...
I think, I think we're done.
Thanks, gentlemen, that was good. I think base, well, the only thing I'd like to say before we hear from the pub is that it appears from the renderings that no matter what the season, whether leaves are up or down, from the street line, it looks like for this house, you're only going to see basically from the roof line up. On the house across the street, it's unimpaired. You see the entire, you see this entire building, it's not a small building. I believe this was approved by this board, I believe the architectural board approved this. It seems like we're having a significantly less impact, no matter what, based on what we've been able to show you in picture form. So other than reserving my right to speak after I hear public comment, unless you have questions, we're good.
Thank you. Usually I go to the consultants.
Maria, if I could just say one thing, just so it's clear for the record. The applicant is representing that in fact, he believes that the house across the street in its current form was approved by this board. I don't know that that's an established fact, so I just want to leave that, that needs to be determined, whether or not it was approved by this board, or it was not approved by this board in the current configuration.
I meant to say it the same way, I don't, I haven't seen the decision, and I had heard that there had been an, either there was or there wasn't.
I know there was, but the attorney wants proof, but that's fine, because it was before the board.
I don't know whether or not it's current shape, it's current shape.
The current shape?
Approved by this board. It may have been.
It may have been, but, because it wouldn't have, all right. Jonathan, you have any reports? Dennis, do you have anything before I go?
Yes, just a couple of things. One is, on the site inspection, you did view the stakes, they had staked the center line of the driveway in the back, and it was evident where the driveway would come in. Immediately when we looked at the foundation, it was not quite clear, because there were a lot of stakes, they tried to identify all the corners, and there's a lot of corners to this house, a lot of different indentations and whatnot. When we finally did determine where it was, the board, I think, got a good view of how large the structure was in terms of its footprint. Most of what the applicant talked about is the mitigations of the size of the structure by the setting on the site, dropping it below the street line, as well as the trees on the site, and those are mitigations. I think there's also the fundamental issue of the cubical contents of the building or its mass. I know that they've talked about reducing the size, but from what I've seen so far, and they can correct me if this is different, that the structure really hasn't changed from the original review, they just have many of the interior areas unfinished. And so the square footage that you looked at, for square footage, interior space went down, but... From what I've seen, from what I've seen... From what I've seen, I haven't seen a reduction in the cubical contents, and if that's the case, then maybe they can provide and clarify what the cubical contents are of the structure in terms of cubic feet. And when we compare that to the other structures, then you would get a feel for whether it's similar or dissimilar. I really haven't had an opportunity to take a look at that graphic, it's a brand new one that came, I think, this evening, and like to take a look at that and see that structure in comparison, because it may be, that the footprint may be closer than we thought it was. The information that we have from the previous approvals indicated that the range of approvals of structures went from... of structures went from 2,479 square feet up to 4,850 square feet, but that wasn't cubical content, that was the entire floor area, interior floor area of the structures. At least, that's what we have on our file. This structure, I don't have the cubical contents, but I have the area of the first floor. The area of the first floor is 6,585 square feet. So, there is a second floor, and there is some of it above grade, but of course, obviously, it's set down low. I think that it might be beneficial to the board to have the cubical contents of this building, so you can understand what that is, and we'll try to relate that to one of the other structures, or one of the other larger structures, perhaps the one across the street, so you could get a better feel for that, but we don't have that information right now. But the code asks you to look at similarity and dissimilarity, and one of the specific items they talk about is cubical content. And the reason I highlight that for you is because from the very beginning, it was recognized that this is gonna be a larger structure. The question is how large, and whether that rises to the level of dissimilarity that might influence your opinion under ARB.
Thank you. Rick?
I have nothing to add.
Board members, you want any comments before I go to the public?
Yeah.
I'm gonna start with Chris.
Oh, okay.
No?
Nope.
Robert?
I wanna know, size of the septic system, is it based on the size of the house, or the number of bedrooms? I mean, is there a limit to the size of it?
Health Department requires that you size it based upon the number of bedrooms in the house.
So, there's two bedrooms?
Yes, and they would have to size it for a minimum of that. If they sized it for the minimum of two bedrooms, then that's what they could have.
But they can't have anything larger, because it's two bedrooms?
If they designed the system for two bedrooms, and that's all that Health Department, they've complied with the regulations for two bedrooms, and that's what they would be permitted to have.
If they were to go to the building...
John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we revised the system to downsize it to the two bedrooms. That was cut.
So, originally, so you revised it to downsize it?
Yes, it was originally for five or six, but we downsized it to the two.
All right, so, but Dennis, I guess, Robert, if I may?
Yes.
If the applicant decides to finish downstairs basement, and wants to create more bedrooms, or whatever they want to do, they would have to go to the building inspector?
They would have to make accommodations. Well, they have to get a building permit for the construction of the bedroom, and then that would raise whatever issues that might be of concern, one being water and wastewater.
And that would go through the building inspector and through the Orange County?
And it wouldn't go through Orange County, not at a single family, but it would go through the building department.
But it has no control over, we have no control over that, it's all with the building inspector?
They need to provide water and wastewater in accordance with the code requirements, and that would be Health Department regulations, which we use for a unit like this. It wouldn't come back to the planning board, no.
That's what I, okay, but that would be the building inspector's purview?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Robert?
Yes.
Now, Rich, did you...
Yeah, I have a couple of just clarifications. We received at the last, I believe it was the last meeting, from the building department, a list of the subdivision homes and the size. I have it here in front of me.
Yep.
If you don't have a copy, I have a copy.
It was for all of us.
We have, okay. Dennis, can you clarify? I see the square footage of the largest homes, which are, is a number, that are 4,850 in the subdivision, but you mentioned the word tonight, cubical content. What is the difference between cubical content and the square footage that we're looking at in the report provided by the building department?
Well, think about it this way, a plain piece of paper, if you look at a plain piece of paper, it has a certain surface area on it. That's when you're looking at square footage there. It's the, looking at the floor area of a structure. The cubical content is if you had a box, and you're looking at the entire size of the box. So, what I was talking about before is you have a box that has a full square foot area on the base, and some of those have a full second floor area that's counted in the square foot area, both the base and the top. So, let's say it's a 2,000 square foot footprint, and it has another 2,000 feet on the second floor, it would be considered 4,000 square feet in that analysis. In this particular one, they have, let's say they have 4,000 square feet on the box in the bottom, and upstairs, they've only finished 1,000 square feet. So, it would list as a 5,000 square foot building, but the cubical contents, because the second story hasn't been counted fully, would be 8,000 square feet. So, what it is, is one is looking at the entirety, like a box, and the other one is looking at as a flat plane, looking down on it. So, square footage is just the floor area, and the cubical contents is the entire box.
Would you be the first floor, second floor, and the basement?
I hope that was clear, if it wasn't...
Yeah, no...
That would include the basement, the cubical content would also include...
It's when you look at a building, and you look at the mass of a building, you can't tell from looking outside at the mass what areas are occupied, what areas are finished, and what areas aren't. You see a mass, and that's the cubical, or that's somewhat the cubical contents of the building, the mass of the building, the structure.
And the reason that's important for your determination is that your ARB obligations, some which determine whether or not something is excessively dissimilar. One of the ways that the code refers to something that tools your comparison is this cubical error, or cubical content, is how, if you're comparing it, that part of what you need to be doing is determining what is that sort of total size of a building visually, versus trying to simply calculate how many square feet of livable space may be in one versus the other.
Okay. The second clarification I have is, Dennis, you said that the proposed is 6,954 square feet, not counting the basement or the second floor, is that correct?
Correct, I just wanted to give you the area comparison.
All right, why are we, okay, that is, if I look at, again, being on the board for 13 years, and we looked at similar applications where we've increased to 10, 15, 20% over the largest house in the subdivision, by my calculation, unless I'm wrong, 6,954, not counting the second floor, is well over 50%. Is that correct?
Well, that may be, it's hard, I only gave that to you because there is the comparison, just with that to the other, it's larger. So, that's why I asked for the mass of the structure, so that you could actually compare that to the one across the street, or others in the development, because we're comparing apples to oranges. You've got a square footage of one floor and one, you're comparing the total square footage in the other. The reason I am not trying to compare the two is because there's so much unfinished space in here, it's not an easy comparison to make. I think the better comparison to make between the structures would be on cubical content. Looking at the footprint of the building across the street, it may be closer than I thought, that's why I said maybe the applicant produced that, and we could take a look at that. And that's why I think Rick mentioned the fact that maybe that structure's been changed to what the board approved, I'm not sure.
Yeah, again, that's where I'm confused, because this has been updated by the building department, and it says the one across the street, 13 Apple, is 4,479, 1,000 square feet. So, I'm not sure what you're relating to when you say the cubical content is different. I'm looking at what the building department provided, the house across the street is 4,479, they're proposing 6,954, which is 50% or more, so I'm trying to relate...
Right, and I'm having trouble relating, when I look at the drawing, I'm having trouble relating the two, because I would have expected it to be more visual, even the footprint, and I don't know why.
And that's not counting the second floor, looking at the proposed, so I would have a hard time even voting on anything tonight, until I understand the proposed, not counting the basement, I'm counting the first floor, the second floor, you know, because it's all, it could be built out.
Well, right now, for comparison under the ARB regulations, for similarity and dissimilarity, I'm having trouble relating the square footage, because there's so much unfinished space in this building. That's why I suggested that perhaps you take a look at the cubical content, which is another way of measuring it, and that's something that you take a look at. I'm having, like you, I'm having trouble looking at the square footage or the footprint of the building across the street, considering what was approved by the board and relating that back, and it's surprising to me, that's all.
No, I agree with your comment, and again, by my calculation, it's well over 50%, which concerns me. So, I would like, what you said, a little more clarification on the, if we go by cubical content, I think we should compare not just this house, but the other size, the largest house that, you know, in this development.
When they talk about content, about square foot, it's just a mechanism for you to visualize the differences, so you can make, it's not one or the other, it's allowing, it's telling the board, these are things you might want to look at, to make that determination.
Okay. Sandy? Rich, you were finished?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, Sandy?
Okay, with this, with regard to the septic fields, you move them closer, and this design is, the way we see it right now, is just for the two bedrooms, right? On the other maps, you had plus a 50% expansion, on this I see it just says plus expansion. What percentage expansion are you allowing for that?
I think I left it at, we put it to 100% expansion.
100% expansion?
It's the same area, it's just minus the lateral.
Okay, but I know when we were out looking...
Because it's two laterals, it's for the two bedrooms.
Right.
So, 50% would be a third lateral.
Right.
It just shows, it's the same box.
Okay, but my concern is where, if you had to expand that, where would it be expanded? Would you go back towards the road and take that knoll down?
Well, the expansion's already shown, and it's back towards the house.
Okay, maybe I'm not looking at this right.
In the septic design, these are the two laterals that should be installed.
Oh, okay.
And these dashboards are the expansion area.
Okay. All right, because I know what...
So, if we ever had to expand in the future, it's going back.
Going back towards the house, okay. That was the concern, because I know, Barry, you said that you weren't sure what that placement was gonna be. Okay. Also, then, in the original, in the original subdivision approval back in 2003, under topography and geology, there were, there was a deed restriction. A deed restriction from disturbance for lots two, which this is lot two, right? Lot two through nine, and 11 through 13 shall run with the land in accordance with the recommendation of the New York State DEC, and the deed restriction shall be submitted in a form acceptable to the board's attorney prior to the signing of the plats, and filed with the Orange County clerk before a permit was given. Is the deed, is there already, is that filed for this lot?
It's the first time this was brought up, I have not looked in the deeds to see what is in the records. It was supposed to be filed before this was signed, but I don't, I don't go ahead and check that that's done. My, the understanding is, is that before it gets signed, that proof is submitted to the building department, but I don't, I haven't looked at that, so I can look at the...
Can we just make sure, then, that that's...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Because that clearing seemed, you know, that's the major part of your argument, that the house is not gonna be seen, so I want to make sure that's in place. And, oh, from the back of the house, that's something we haven't talked about, but I know after we were out there, we went and looked. Is that going to be visible from, is it, not Janice, I guess it's Van Tassel, the road behind it?
Yes, Van Tassel.
Right, that house up in the corner there, is that, how visible, because it's hard to tell the slope of the land, how visible is this house gonna be to that, and what is the impact gonna be of the impervious surface for runoff and anything else down in that direction?
Like, probably to be honest with you, they probably won't see us, because they're going to be approximately 20, 30, 40, almost 50 feet lower.
On that slope?
Yeah, the back of our house, to the, about roughly the back of their house, is about a 50-foot drop.
Okay.
So, I think they're gonna be so much lower, they won't be able to actually see completely up there, through the woods.
And on that rendering, where, approximately where's the clearing line in the back?
It's right here. So, here's our property line, is this one.
Right.
And the clearing line is right here.
Okay, so that disturbance will not affect any kind of runoff in that direction?
Correct.
Down that slope?
Yes.
Okay.
The runoff, pattern of runoff is one of this one.
Okay.
It looks like, it looks like they build this house, they carved into the hill, and they push the runoff there, and then this side.
Okay.
When we were there, though, I mean, I'm pretty sure you're right, in the LeFond season, but when we were there, within the footprint, we could see the other houses, so I'm sure they'll be able to see this house.
I don't know if they'll be able to see up, they won't be able to see down. I don't think, from standing from where they are, I don't think they'll be able to see, because you're gonna see higher on top of the hill, than looking up.
All right, the microphone's working, that you can use, please.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I get cordless.
That's okay. I'll just remind you.
Sorry. I just think, the way that they have this slope, it's really steep in here, so as it comes down, they're looking at the bank, and then the bank starts to level off. So, if you're at the top, you're gonna be able to see down, but if you're at the bottom, you're looking into a sharp bank, and then it levels off at the top. So, it's, I don't think it's as easy, easily...
But it is visible from the house right next door?
Yeah.
Extremely visible, okay.
Correct, yeah. It's about...
As any house would be, I mean, it's any septic...
This, it's about 80 feet away from the house.
The corner is 80 feet away?
Yes.
How's the house?
Chris? When you were, when you were standing at, and Dennis, when you were standing at the corner, that was 80 feet away from that house?
It could have been, they have property on the lot, and if they've measured it off their plan, I would trust that.
That looked off a lot of those.
It looked like, well, I was away from you, because I was on the, but I could...
Okay.
Side wall here to the property line is 40, it's another four, their house.
It just, it was deceiving, yeah, it was deceiving, okay, that's it.
Anyone else, I'm gonna go to the public, since this is a public hearing. Gentlemen, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat, in case you have anyone from the public who would like to speak. I'd like to hear from the public. Just give me a second. Let them sit down for a second, just a minute. Gentlemen, you're gonna sit down, right? Thank you. Anyone in the first row who'd like to speak on this application, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, please. Excuse me, before you start, I'm sorry. This was posted in a Times Herald Record on Friday, March 1st. Notice this hereby given that the Village Woodbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, March 6th, at Woodbury Village Hall, 455 Route 32, Highland Mills, New York, in the matter of the application of Barretterick Architects in care of Aaron Weiss for ARB review of proposed single-family home located at 26 Apple Hill Drive in Highland Mills. This property is designated as a critical environmental area pursuant to secret and subject to the Village Regulations for Ridge Preservations, 310-13. Said property is known under Village Woodbury Tax Matters, Section 204 Block 2, Lot 2. Now you may continue.
My top form, I live at 22 Apple Hill Drive, I'm just two houses from here. I'm just curious about the...
You can, you can take the microphone out to hold it, there you go.
It's not working anyway.
There you go, it's on.
What does the conservation part entail, is what I'm wondering, as far as, are all of the house on Apple Hill, they follow the conservation, they work, or...
I have conserved trees, and just so much, it seems like I can cut down all the trees.
That I have to look into, conserve, I don't recall from when we approved that, back in 2003.
I don't recall the specifics, but I think it was the rear area of the lot.
So, basically, just that side of Apple Hill Drive, all the way around?
I think, and I'll have to check it for you, but I think it ran up the hill, behind the houses and up in that area, and I thought that was the restriction, right? But...
Yeah, that's what I was curious about, is why some lots are supposed to be, or not, or some...
Understood, yep. All right, thank you.
No, this is supposed to, okay, we're not, 22, I'm two houses from here.
Thank you. You want him to say it on the...
Well, nobody, nobody came to that claim, they didn't talk to me. They said they...
Secretary will?
Nobody, nobody came to talk to me.
You got that, right? Okay. Anyone else in the first row? Second row? Anyone want to speak on this application? Third row? Standing room? Back of the room? Board members mean that there's no other public that wants to come up on this application or a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
At a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Do you want to comment, Barry, before I...
Quick thing. I, I would have to check to verify this, but I remember from the original application, I'm going to say the number's about 1,800 square feet less on the first floor now than there was on the first application. I'll, I'll verify that number. We certainly have this application, and it was, but I know we did some significant, significant changes, particularly to the back of the house, it's not evident from the front. But it was, it was mostly the back area behind the garage. A big difference there. You know, and also, I'm certainly capable of doing cubicle square feet, problem there. But as we're sitting here discussing it together, and even by Dennis' own admission, you look at that aerial, and cubicle square feet isn't really good necessarily, differences. You know, I took, if our proposed house was the same, was the same width as one, as 13, from the road, you don't know if it goes back 20 feet or 50 feet, and the cubicles or footage is going to be ridiculously different with no...
Just speak a little louder for the microphone.
With, with no visual impact difference from the road. I understand we want to take as many factors as we can to assess this, but, you know, the house could be 20 feet wide and 200 feet deep, and you wouldn't know it. So, you know, I might, I might, I'm just not sure of the significance. I'm happy to provide the information, but I question the significance of what it's going to tell you.
The significance is, is that the code provides this board that that's one of the criteria that it ought to be judging, whether or not something is excessively dissimilar.
And Barry, the first one, it was, the first floor was 8,800 square feet, so now we're down to 69. So I think the 69 is the accurate number, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's closer to 2,000.
All right, just, just for the record, Sandy was referring to the resolution that was approved and voted on May 7, 2003, about the deed restriction, and the ARB was added on 5/21/2003. And if you can't find it, Dennis, I have my copy here, signed copy. With that being said, I just want to touch base with the board members. Let me just find it. There's a couple things that have been brought up tonight. Cubicle space versus square footage. In this, 19 years I've completed here, this is the first year I've heard about cubicle space. This is all new to me. I need it to be explained, and I know once we approve different style models and homes on any application, we always put a range from minimum to maximum. We sign off on it, it goes to the building department. If the building department gets an application later on to expand, if the cubicle space was ABC, and they want to add it on to XYZ, we don't know about that. And that's something that this board cannot control, because that's in the building department's area. So talking about cubicle space versus square footage, I understand, like I said, 19 years, I, I've seen it, I've seen most everything here. We, and we've always had the discussion over the last year or so. I know Sandy and I, there's a development that we're constantly asking about, the square footage and the size of a building, and we can't do anything about it because it's a building department issue. We have to figure out also tonight, similarity. The home that is being proposed tonight, yes, it is about 125 feet in length, and it's about, depth is about 30 feet, or depending on which corner you look at, because there's, like Dennis mentioned before, there's different angles and quarters. I was there for the site visit, and yes, if you're looking, if you're standing in the road and wherever you're going to stand, you're going to see from the second floor to the roof line. We had another development that was built next door, and there was supposed to be a 50-foot barrier with trees. When the first house went up, the neighbor who was there already, they cut all my trees down. They went and measured, 50 feet is not very long. They measured, and it was 50 feet, and that's when they cut the trees down. When you start cutting trees down, the visibility expands. So we have to really take in consideration, if this house goes in, some of these trees will be cut down. There is going to be some visibility on all sides. We need to know, and we have to, the way the shape of the house is, is it similar or dissimilar? That's what I need to understand tonight, and we have to make a decision on that. And once we make a decision on that, then we can ask our attorney to start putting things into a resolution, whether it's approval or disapproval. And I see my attorney holding up his microphone, so I'm going to defer to you now. These are my comments.
Right, I just, I mean, those are all good comments. I just wanted to caution that I don't think that any decision needs to be made tonight with respect to dissimilarity issue. We need additional information that'll be provided by Barry, and also I know Dennis is going to be looking into this, and also, we are going to look into the issue of the deed restriction that was put back then. That was before I was planning board attorney.
Yep.
But we will look into that. So I think, nothing has to be done tonight.
Correct.
So I just wanted to weigh in on that.
But if any...
Can I read one other item?
Get the mic works. We haven't dealt that much with cubicle content in the past because we haven't had a building that has so much interior space that's unfinished. And so it hasn't really come in. You've, you've been dealing with square footages, generally square footages for the footprints of the building and for the second floor, because all of it, most of it's been finished. This one is a new wrinkle, so that's why I think it takes on more relevance. Not that it shouldn't have been considered previously, but I don't think that it was up front so much because of this difference that I talk about here. So I think in this particular case, it should be a factor that you weigh. You may still come to the same conclusion, but it's, it's a factor that I think you should weigh.
Also, Dennis, I'm going to request, what's the house number for the house that has no trees around, with the one tree? 13? If you can also, Dennis, review the map and the resolution that we approved for 13 Apple Hill, what the square footage is, and if, and any additional permits were requested from the owner to expand their basement, and that would give us an idea of the cubicle total feet that they expanded. Because I know that was supposed to be an unfinished basement, and from driving by, there are lights down there, so I don't know what's going on down there, but maybe the building department would know what's happening. That would give us a better idea. Does anyone want to touch on about Gary's memo? I talk about it so we can, we don't have to make a decision tonight. Does anyone want to talk about that?
I'll talk about it.
Go ahead.
I know, again, I don't know, with Rich, you had said 50%. I came up with like 42% larger. And I know, Mr. Mauro, you said that that shouldn't be our only review, that we had to consider the safety and if it was a detriment to the area. Personally, I think something that large, that, that much bigger, because we've heard the argument, well, you let that person do 10%, and then the next guy comes in and he said, well, you let that guy do 10%, so that's 10 and 10, so that's 20% now. And I just feel that this size of a house sets a precedent in that there are still six, I think, undeveloped lots up there. So the next person may want to do 30% larger than your 40, 42%. And sooner or later, the impervious surface up there and the, you know, the stripping of the land, the, the trees, it is going to be, it's going to be unstable. It's, it's going to present problems down the road. So I do, at this point, I think it's excessively dissimilar, and, oh, I thought somebody was talking. And, I mean, I think the house is beautiful, but standing there and looking at that footprint, it's massive. It is massive. And my fear is just that it is going to set a precedent that will ultimately harm the property in that area and have, you know, a runoff, a mudslide, whatever you want to call it, but down the road, I think it could present problems.
Well, if I may...
Yeah?
Okay. Number one, I, I think runoff is controlled by other regulations in that we can't create, we can't create more runoff after proposed construction than we have currently right now. So I'm not sure where the runoff is going to end. This is an architectural review board review. The reason I don't think we can create a precedent is because we're not here asking for the approval of a particular size of a house. We're here asking for an approval based on what the impact, the visual impact of that house is going to be, no matter what size. And my position is, is that if you look at what you see from the road, and what you can basically see from where the public is, you're not going to be able to tell whether that house is 10,000 cubicle feet or square feet, or 100,000. You're going to see the top of, you're going to see from the second floor up, you're going to see a roof, and you really, you wouldn't be able to tell from the street whether or not, what the size of this house is. It's also, now, I happen to agree that cubicle, that your code actually makes cubicle content and square footage one of the factors that has to be considered in making a decision. But basically, the code, the way your, the code is written, the authority you're given, is that you are to consider whether, what the impact is of the exterior appearance of the building. That's set forth in a number of places in the codes in 8.1 and in 8.5. And basically, all is going to come back to what you can see. It's really the exterior, it's really, similarity, fine. Over similarity, fine, but if you don't see that, it doesn't create the impact. And that ultimately comes down to how you are going to make your decision, because your code specifically says, after you disapprove, you have to find that that visual exterior impact is so detrimental to desirability, property values, development of the surrounding areas, to provoke one of the harmful effects in 8.1. They are very specific in 8.1. When you go down to 8.54, it says that you have to make these findings reasonable doubt. The facts that you point to have to be, that is a very high standard of proof. So I think those are somewhat limiting on, I think that, that's, you use some direction as to what, how serious you have to find that something is actually, you're going to, you're giving benefit. Those, that language essentially gives the benefit to the landowner. Now, I wholly agree that everything you've asked for, every, the cubicle con, everything is absolutely on the table, you have the absolute right to know that, and you have the absolute right to consider it. But when you come right down to it, it's what you see. And what you see in this neighborhood, especially when you look across the street, is you're seeing this building with absolutely no screening, you're seeing it from top to bottom, you're seeing that visual impact, and when you compare that to what you see from what we proposed, no matter how big it is, it doesn't, it doesn't really compare. So I'm only asking that when you consider dissimilarity, when you consider similarity, when you consider cubicle content, when you consider square footage, you consider it in the context that I believe the law requires you to do, and that is what exactly are we going to see. A concern about runoff, I absolutely agree with you, that's always a concern. I think that it's going to fall within the purview. Number one, it should have been addressed when subdivision matters are approved. There should have been stronger regulations that would have controlled that. And number two, the building inspector has every right to control that, it had to apply standard, you know, current standards and regs. So in the, in the context of an architectural review board, determination, I'm not sure runoff exactly is relevant at this point. I totally agree, it's always important, but I'm not sure it really fits into this. So I'm really asking this board to take a, take a look carefully at how this code is written. It's a pretty high standard, and I think that, based on what we've shown you visually, I, I think we've sustained that we're not going to have an over, overly burdening effect on the neighborhood, especially when you look at what is spelled out in, in 8.1. These are some pretty onerous, these are really onerous. And I don't think that there's any way you can correlate one to the other based looking at these drawings. So I, I appreciate your hearing on that.
Thank you. Anything else, Sandy?
Well, just for the record, my silence doesn't mean that I agree with Jay's conclusions with respect to what all of your standards are. When we get to that point, I will advise the board of what I think your duties and responsibilities are.
Anything else? Sandy? Robert?
No, nothing else.
Chris? Rich?
I'm good.
Okay. At this point, we can close the public hearing. We need our consultants to review a couple things. Being that we closed the public hearing, when do we have to make, there's no time clock on this because it's not a subdivision?
There may well be some kind of time clock in the code, I'll have to look at that. It may be something of 60 days after the close of public hearing, you should make a decision. It's not like subdivisions, where if you fail to make a decision in that time, there's a default approval, there's no default approval here. And if you need some more time past that, you can always ask the applicant for an extension of that time. So let's not worry right now about that. I will advise the board as to when the decision ought to be made, but I think that it really needs to, as long as you're going at a reasonable pace, trying to gather this information right now, in my opinion, the clock doesn't really start because you have asked the applicant for some information that you need in order to go ahead and have an informed decision with respect to, to the matter. But let's get the information that comes in, and then I'll advise you as to when I think you need to be making a decision by.
Regarding that information, I can certainly and accurately calculate the cubicle square footage of our proposal, but what are we going to compare that to?
What are we going to compare it to?
Well, I don't have access to neighboring houses.
Dennis, what are we going to compare that to?
I was just saying, I can calculate the cubicle of our proposed house, but what
do I do about knowing the cubicle square footage of other houses?
You're right, that's going to be difficult to do. May be able to have some information for you on that house. I'll take a look and see if we have plans still on our file for the one, I, I think...